February eighth. And Andrew needs the PowerPoint pulled up, and I think Matt wants to go do that.
Okay.
Anything we need to do as we get started?
Not necessarily, except I guess open the city council school. This is gonna be a modified presentation.
Well, if you wanna log into the computer, I'll turn off my, I know we have to turn on some stuff back here for the
Do you know the password is for this one?
It's whatever your password is.
Oh, just log on.
Yeah, just log on if you want.
How are you doing today?
Okay.
Someone no, he has to set everything up, we've never signed it in.
Well, for this one Dustin might have signed it in.
We don't share passwords.
Andrew, you're fine.
This is cool.
Yeah, I would have signed it, but it'd do the same thing for me if you were not.
Yeah. Yeah, this takes a while.
Oh, I know, I never know if I should, I thought it was gonna be minutes.
I assume you'll send this to us as well?
Yes, Matt already has it.
We may just set everything up.
Or we can hear it always.
There we go, okay. Now, if you don't mind. I'm gonna set, you know, hope that this thing, yeah, that oughta work. Um, okay, so this, this is kind of a modified presentation that a partner and I give to, I call it City Council School, because we give it to this, what's called the City Clerk School every year for the first year of City Clerks. Debbie was in our class this year, or I guess late last year. Uh, this is not exactly the same thing that they get, because they have some details that you don't necessarily have to spend your time on. Um, but really, this is just designed to be an overview of how, uh, some of the important things that you would need to know as a city council member about really the way the city works and the laws that affect the law. And so I think that will be helpful for everybody, even those who may have heard most of this before. Um, so I'm gonna cover meetings, what the law says about meetings, why they're conducted the way they are, um, how things get voted on, um, agendas, records, and contracts, and all those kinds of things, so we can just jump in. So, in Kansas, there are three types of cities. There's divided by class, they're called cities of the first class, cities of the second class, and cities of the third class. Does anybody know what type of city the city of Kichai is? I'll go with the mayor.
A city of the third class.
That is correct. Um, but the main distinction, there are a lot of them, but the main distinction between the three types of cities is population. And it's really, it starts off with the population that existed at the time the city was organized. So, uh, Kichai, at the time it was organized, had less than two thousand people in it, so that's why it's a city of the third class. Uh, it has since surpassed two thousand. When that happened a few years ago, the council at the time passed a resolution that said, "We intend to remain a city of the third class," because if they hadn't done that, you would have automatically become a city of the second class. Um, and you are permitted to remain a city of the third class until you hit five thousand. So, at that point in time, you would have to look at converting to a city of the second class. But, um, cities of the first class are obviously the big, bigger metropolitan areas. And we won't go into a lot of distinctions between these things, um, but there are different rules that apply to different types of cities. Uh, for example, um, cities of the first and second class, unless you change it, the, uh, council members are elected by ward, meaning the territory of the area, obviously all of you are elected at large, and so, you know, that would have changed if we, if we had converted. But, within that, there are two main types of government that a city can have. One is a mayor council, and the other is a commission. Everybody knows here that Kichai is a mayor council city, but I'll tell you what that means. Uh, and by the way, you, you have a lot of questions. I don't have to, I don't have to talk entirely. Um, but, in a mayor council city, the governing body is the city council. And that, those are the five of you who are not the mayor. Um, the purpose of the city council is, if you think about like your civics class in middle school or high school, the federal government, you know, has the three branches, well, it's kind of parallel in the city, uh, even though it's a little bit different. The governing body is the legislative body of the city government. So, the city council is the one that makes laws, makes policies. Um, every time you pass an ordinance, technically you are creating a law that is effective within the city of Kichai. The mayor, on the other hand, is kind of analogous to the executive branch. Um, so, while the mayor participates in some of the legislative actions, uh, as you probably know, and we'll talk about in a little bit more detail, um, for the most part, the mayor is actually the head of the administrative part of the city, uh, in, in the city of the third class in particular. Um, they are elected by the city at large, um, and they mainly make sure that, uh, the laws and policies set out by the governing body are executed. Then, you can have a city manager or city administrator, who have an administrator, um, who is the one in charge of day-to-day operations of the city and the employees of the city. Um, that is created, that is a, a job created by the, by the council, um, and falls underneath the mayor's purview and takes care of, like you said, the, the day-to-day functions. Now, there are some cities that have commissions, and you may see that from time to time if you engage with people who live in other types of cities. Um, that, these do, obviously don't, do not apply to Kichai, but there are some distinctions that are interesting for you to know, where a commission is the same essentially as a, a city council, where it is the legislative body. And the mayor still has largely some of the similar, um, uh, responsibilities that a mayor in a mayor council form does, but the mayor's not elected at large in a commission. So, all the commissioners are elected by the people of the city, and then after that happens, the commissioners get together and elect from them who will be the mayor. Uh, it has some effects, uh, with respect to things like veto rights and some other things that, that those types of mayors don't have, because they are a commissioner. But, uh, and then, those types of cities will often then still have an administrator or a manager. Um, another thing to note, the city administrator's not the same as the city manager. The city manager is a specific type of, another subset of a type of government. For example, City Wichita is a city manager type of government, and that means that the council and the mayor, they're still the legislative and executive sort of branches of the government, but they delegated a lot more responsibility to the manager than, than you have, your Kichai, for example. And, um, the manager is, has much more authority to hire and fire employees, make spending decisions, and all those kinds of things. So, that's one of the main distinctions, and sometimes those words are used anonymously. You know, correct people, but now you know, it's not necessarily the same thing. Meetings, this is important, and I, I expect you guys to ask some questions. There are three types of meetings that the city council can have. First is a regular meeting. This is, where we are now is a continuation of a regular meeting, but what will happen at seven o'clock is a regular meeting. That was a meeting that we scheduled at the beginning of the year, it's on the calendar, the public knows about it, um, and it's going to happen. The, you have to have meetings at least monthly. You will note that sometimes traditionally in November and December, because holidays, the city of Kichai has not had that second meeting, and that's okay, as long as you have a meeting, a regular meeting, at least once every month. At a regular meeting, the agenda is what we call open. So, I know we have an agenda today, and we go through the exercise, which is, which is prudent to, uh, you know, do we have any changes to the agenda, um, we approve the agenda, and that's, that's good, so we have good order with what's going on. But what we mean by open agenda, as you know, is, uh, any other matter can be discussed, can be brought up, even though it's not necessarily on the agenda ahead of time, or even on the agenda after we've quote approved it. So, if something comes up, or a, a city council member or a member of the public wants to bring something up, you're allowed to talk about any city matter you want at a, at a regular meeting with an open agenda. At a meeting, at a regular meeting, you have to have, in order for it to occur, we have to have a quorum. Because you have to have a certain number of you show up in order to have that meeting. The quorum is a majority of the council elect. So, right now, we've got five members of the council, so we have to have at least three of you to actually hold a meeting. Um, there's a shorthand I think about, this is another situation we're about to talk about, but it's basically, if you have enough people to take an action. If you have enough people to take an action, you can have a meeting. If you don't have enough people to take an action, you can't even, you can't even have a meeting. Um, and so, if it were to ever happen that even at a scheduled meeting, if we didn't have a quorum present, if we didn't have at least three members of the, of the city council, we wouldn't be able to have that meeting. Yes?
So, what happens if, say, in November and December, say, we didn't have a quorum, for whatever reason? And since we only have one meeting that month, do we have to schedule, I'm sure you're getting to it, a special meeting?
Uh, yeah, well, yes, but it won't be a special meeting. What you have to do, the only thing that a non-quorum can do, if they show up at a regular meeting, the only thing they can do is schedule the rescheduling of the regular meeting. So, if only two of you, or two of you and the mayor show up, and you can't have your regular meeting, you are permitted to say, "Okay, we're gonna postpone this meeting till this time next week," and that will still be our regular meeting. Okay? It's one of those little exceptions, which makes complete sense. The second type of meeting is a special meeting. Um, a special meeting is meetings that happen in between the regular meetings. They're called when three council members, um, sign a written request that a special meeting be called at the time and the, and the place it's to happen. Um, if three members of the council sign that written request, the mayor is required to call that special meeting. Notice, because special meetings happen, and there was no schedule done at the beginning of the year for everybody to know about, there's notice requirements when you have a special meeting. So, the notice requirements are, the city clerk has to send a notice, um, to anyone who's on a list who has requested that they receive notices of special meetings. So, the clerk has a list, usually it's the newspaper, interested citizens, various, um, individuals like that. She has a list in her office, and everyone who's ever said, "The city council called a special meeting, I want you to tell me about it." Um, and so, if that happens, she has to send notice of the time, place, and purpose of that special meeting to everybody on that list. That's the bare minimum notice requirement. It's also very good practice to, if you have time, publish it in the newspaper, um, put it on Facebook, put it on the city website. All of those things are good prudent things to do. Um, they're not necessarily legally required, um, really, because in the event of an emergency, the, 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 there's no set time period for how far in advance you have to provide notice of a special meeting. Um, you know, a couple of days is usually the rule of thumb, is that we know that's sufficient. But, you know, if there's a water line break, or the electricity is out, or there's some kind of an emergency, you can call a special meeting right away, do your best to get out notices, but, you know, in an emergency situation, don't let the, the notice situation keep you from taking care of what you need to take care of. The other really important thing about special meetings is, those have closed agendas. So, if you call a special meeting, and in the notice you say, "The purpose is, the city council is going to discuss X and Y." And when you get to that special meeting, you can't talk about anything else. Because you told the people, the public, everybody who's gonna get the notice, you told them, "This is what we're gonna talk about," and so you can't pull up, the bait and switch is really what the law's concerned about. Uh, and so, whatever you say you're gonna have on that agenda for a special meeting has, has to be, has to be the only thing on the agenda for that meeting. Who knows what the third type is? Somebody's seen, get this before.
I don't remember the name of it.
Illegal?
That wasn't the one I received.
Uh, we're talking about what constitutes a meeting, but if it's not one of these do, is illegal. Um, and then adjournment versus recessed. We all just did this at the last regen- regular meeting two weeks ago, and in order to hold this, uh, workshop, you recessed your prior meeting rather than adjourning it. Adjourning it means we're done, recess means we're holding it open to a future time and place. When we do that, it's a little bit of a hybrid, um, meeting. Right now, we technically still have an open agenda, because we are a continuation of a regular meeting. The people who were here at the last meeting, when you told them when we were gonna have this time and place of this, would have notice of all of that. Um, and so, we could talk about any other city business that we wanted to at this, at this meeting. However, um, the, the clerk should give special notice, uh, of, of this meeting to anybody who's on that list, uh, that, that we were gonna have this workshop. I don't know if that got done, now we have.
Would, would this be at the top of the meeting agenda?
Yeah, yeah, perfect.
Down to that modification?
Yep, because it went out to everybody on that list, right?
Yep.
Then we're good. Um, holidays and rescheduling, you know, from time to time, holidays and things reschedule, and that's okay. That's okay, as long as, um, we're doing it out of the open. Um, all of this comes from the Open Meetings Act. This is intended to be sure that the public has the opportunity to be present, um, at most times when the council is discussing city business, right? Um, and so, for purposes of these rules, what constitutes a meeting? Any gathering of the city council, um, where a majority of the membership of the city council is present. So, again, the rule of thumb, if you have enough people to take an action, you are at a meeting, whether it's regular, special, or illegal, potentially. Uh, for the purpose of discussing city business. So, if you have a council barbecue at the mayor's house, and everybody shows up, do we necessarily have an illegal meeting? No, not as long as you don't discuss city business. Um, if we have two of you at a local restaurant sitting down and talking about city business, do we have an illegal meeting?
No.
No, because you don't have enough people to take any, take an action. Um, there are some things that we can get tripped up on, though. Chain meetings, I'm gonna go with reword here and actually talk about those.
That was the word I was trying to remember.
Chain meetings, yeah. Chain meetings, it, it falls under illegal meeting category.
I'll just remember illegal. I don't have to remember chain.
So, chain meetings are the, okay, we all know now that we can't get more than two of us in a room to talk about city business, but boy, I really wanna know what so-and-so's gonna vote on this next time we come to a meeting, and, and I really wanna figure out whether this is gonna pass, if this is gonna pass. And, so, it, and it's, it's a really nuanced line. Can one of you call each other member and have a discussion individually about a city topic? Yes, you can. Um, you can get the input from every other council member, so that you know what their positions are. But what you can't do is create a chain where I talk to one city council member, and then I call the next city council member, and I say, "Well, I think this, but you know, council member one thinks that." And then we go on, and so we've subverted the purpose of the open meetings by trying to keep the things down, but we've actually created a chain where we fig- we can figure out, you know, uh, and that is the definition of a chain meeting, and that's what you, you want to avoid. Um, other things that can, even if you don't intentionally, but accidentally become chain meetings, or even actual meetings by accident, is anything that allows for interactive communication. If it hits those three things, can become a meeting. So, like, when the city administrator sends out an email to everybody with the agenda on it for the week. Um, if someone were to reply all of that and start giving their opinion about some item on the agenda, we got a violation. Um, and so, I, I think we're good about that, we don't do that, and we have admonishments at the bottom sometimes I have about, please don't reply all to this email, and that's exactly why you see that, and it's because sometimes it's really easy to forget about those kinds of things. Um, there's also the whole new world of social media. Um, and so, if we get in conversations on Facebook, or Instagram, or whatever the newest thing is, that's all interactive communication, and you don't always control who's coming in and out. So, if two of you are having a conversation on Facebook in a public setting, and then a third member jumps on, now you've accidentally got a potential violation. So, does Questions?
So, what happens if, if someone did any of those things that you mentioned?
The, the, the remedy is, is you can be reported to the attorney general's office, who has the ability to find the city and the council members. And ultimately, of, of course, you've heard me say this before, ultimately, the rem- there's always political remedies. Uh, if, if there's bad action that the, that the people disapprove of, of course, you know, they can always vote someone out. Um, but from a legal perspective, the attorney general has finding ability for proven violations.
Didn't you say it's cool, it's just better just to stay off?
Oh, y- y- yes. Yeah, our, our recommendation is, there's a place for disseminating city information on the internet and social media, but my recommendation is, it's a lot, it's much easier to stay out of trouble if you don't engage in interactive communication on the internet and social media. I've, I've seen it cause way more problems than I've seen it solved. Not, and that is, again, not to say that you shouldn't use those things to push out city information by meetings, those are great channels of communication, you just have to be careful about the interactive parts. And finally, that's all just to say that whenever we have a meeting, it's gotta be open to the public. That's the purpose behind the whole Open Meetings Act, is that the public knows it's gonna happen, generally what's gonna be discussed, um, unless you have an open agenda, and that can be anything, but they have the opportunity to come.
May I interject this here briefly, because I've been on the council probably, I think, longer than anybody. So, historically, we've been very careful about that, so if I'm standing here after a meeting, and I'm talking to Todd about something, and a third person comes up, we've been very good at, at saying, "We have to stop the conversation now, because Karen walked up," or, so, historically, we've just gotten the habit of doing that. And we've done a really good job of, of being careful and navigating that, so. Because we're gonna visit afterwards, and you never know when some part of our just general conversation could slide into a city topic, and you have to, to shut that off, so, I think we've historically done a pretty good job.
That's exactly right, thanks for bringing that up, I usually try to bring that up.
You also didn't talk about me, where do I count this? I know how I count, but they
Like, what's my number compared to theirs? Like, three, because isn't there a certain quorum where, like, I can be with two city council members, but they can't?
Right, it's, and, and it's because of that, it's because we, we count the quorum based on the, the city council, who can take an action. Two members of the city council and the mayor still can't take an action, because the mayor doesn't vote on those things.
I just wanted to make sure that people didn't know.
Right, 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 right.
So, the mayor can take two, two city council members to lunch?
Good.
Yeah. That's what I'm thinking, just the mayor should pay for lunch.
Matt really wants that in mind.
I'll let you know what restaurant it's in.
Um, so, when and what can we discuss not in open session? Those exceptions are all executive sessions. You've all been involved in those at this point. Um, but those are only allowed in very specific, specific circumstances set out by the law. Um, there are a handful that are used, uh, very often, there are a handful that might sometimes be used, and then there are a, a whole bunch of them maybe you'll never use. Um, the most common are for personnel matters, non-elected personnel. So, if there's a need to talk about city employees, for whatever reason, that can absolutely be done in executive session for obvious reasons. Um, attorney-client privilege, so if there's a matter that I need to give you advice on, um, that is attorney-client privilege, because the city is my client, um, that obviously can be done in executive session. Um, and then, if the city is looking at potentially acquiring real estate, I want to be clear about this, not the sale, it's the acquisition, the acquisition of real estate, there is, you are allowed to discuss that in executive session, um, because, of course, you don't necessarily wanna broadcast to the public what you'd be willing to pay for a piece of property, because all of a sudden, that will be the price, if not more, yeah. So, so those are, those are often, uh, those are fairly common, probably the most common reasons why we would go into executive session, we discuss those matters. Some things that might come up, employee, employer employer, employee negotiations, very similar to, to personnel matters, except that it could be with somebody who hasn't been hired yet. Um, financial affairs or trade secrets of private entities and individuals. If there were something going on where we were having some discussions with, for example, well, an individual or even a company, for whatever reason, maybe some economic development things, where not, not general, uh, information about their business, but if they needed to share something that was a trade secret, or something that was confidential in their financials, we are permitted to do that in the executive session. Um, and then things like how the security measures of City Hall are, where the cameras are with the system is like computer systems, those kinds of things can also be discussed, again, for the obvious reasons why that would be under the exceptions. And then I won't read through these, because they're really specific, but there are a whole bunch of things that, that we'll never, or very unlikely to use, going to executive session. Executive sessions, I've said to all of you, I think last week, um, at the request of Councilmember Edstrom, which was very refreshing, to, um, there, to call an executive session, which you're very good at. You have to set it out in these three things, which is, you have to tell a subject to be discussed, not necessarily detail, obviously, but the subject, um, the justification, which is one of those things on the previous slide. Often, those are the same things, we're gonna talk about, um, non-elected personnel, the justification, the topics, really essentially the same thing. Um, attorney-client privilege, often we say the same thing. And the time and place at which the meeting will resume, you're always good about that. Yeah, before we do that. So, many of you have heard me say this before, the time and place of resuming. So, it is, it's usually prudent for the city clerk So it is, it's usually prudent for the city clerk to keep an eye on the, on the clock. And certainly if, if the council's going over an executive session, there's nothing wrong with knocking on the door, pointing out that they're running out of time. But actually going slightly over your time is not necessarily a grave error. Um, it's actually worse to come back when we can't, you can't come back early. The whole purpose of the disclosure about what time and what place we're gonna come back in here and resume the regular meeting is so that the public knows that they can go outside, or they can do whatever they're gonna do, if we're gonna be in executive session for an hour, maybe they wanna leave and come back. But we can't come back and start resuming our meeting and talking about other things if we've told the public that we're not gonna come back until a specific time. So if we don't come back early, if we need an extra three to five minutes, it, it's not, not even kind of a violation.
And we can come back out and ask for more time?
Absolutely, yeah, that is the proper session. If you need more than just a couple of minutes, you know, I'll tell you, come back, if you need another twenty minutes, we're gonna come back in here and resume and then ask for another executive session. Um, and as you all know, we cannot take action in an executive session. So even if some course of action is discussed in an executive session, if it requires council approval, that has to be done here. So frequently, we will come out of executive session and take some action. Sometimes not, sometimes it's just a discussion. Um, I wanna briefly go through different types of actions and authorities, because you will see all three of these, and sometimes you may say, why do we do one, one way and another one a different way? Basically, there's three ways that the council can do anything, that's ordinances, resolutions, and motions. Ordances are legislative acts, that's passing laws that is, uh, enforceable within the city limits of the City of Ketchikan. Um, anytime you are amending the city code, obviously that's done within ordinance. Anytime we are doing things that, that, uh, law determines to be legislative, like, if you were issuing bonds, we always do that by ordinance, because the law says that's legislative. There, those kinds of things are always done by ordinance. Uh, ordinances must be passed by a majority of the members-elect of the governing body. So you have five members of the governing, five members of the city council. So to pass an ordinance, it has to be approved by three. Even if one of you is missing for some reason, um, and there's only four council members present, and ordinance still has to be passed by three. If two people are missing from the meeting, or only three council members are present, the ordinance has to be passed by all three council members who are there. The mayor, for ordinances, has a right to veto. So for any ordinance, with some exceptions, um, the ord- the mayor has the ability, the mayor has to either approve an ordinance, which the vast majority of the time she does, by signing it after, after the meeting is over. Um, she does have the option to veto an ordinance anytime after it's, after it's passed until the next regular meeting. Um, and if she vetoes that ordinance, either in writing or during the meeting that it occurs, or at the next regular meeting, she says, you know, this be- this ordinance was passed and I'm vetoing it, then that ordinance does not take effect unless the council repasses it with a three-quarters majority. And in the case of your five-member council, that means it has to be approved by four council members to override the mayor's veto. Once the ordinance has been passed, assuming there's no veto, or it's vetoed and overwritten, an ordinance has to be published in the official city newspaper, uh, in order to take effect. So like, when we pass a change to anything in the city code on a Thursday, and then the clerk submits that ordinance to the official city newspaper for publication, how, when do they publish it?
The following Thursday.
The following Thursday? That ordinance is not in effect until the following Thursday, when it shows up in the newspaper. Um, ordinances can only be undone by other ordinances. So if you pass an ordinance and you change your mind at one point in time, or there was a city code or, uh, provision that you wanna change, that's why you have to apply another ordinance. Um, and then a couple of things, City Ketchikan doesn't do this, but you may hear about this in other councils. You can, instead of publishing an entire ordinance, publishing a newspaper, a summary of the ordinance. There are some cities that do that, just to cut down on publication costs. Uh, it requires you need to write a summary to certify that it's accurate. He put, he put me on the, but, um, the other thing that's very much in vogue these days is naming the city's website as the official city newspaper. I won't go through the long sort of history of this. But at least as of six months ago, we do know that the attorney general's office in a way issued an opinion that that was permissible. Uh, our office had taken the, the view until that opinion came out that it was probably okay, but we weren't gonna tell anybody it was a bad. Because it's, it, it, yeah. But even if you do that, there's a lot of pitfalls, it creates a lot of complication. Generally because, you'd be surprised how many times in the state law, it says such and such will be published in the official city newspaper. And then in other places, it says such and such will be published in a newspaper of general circulation. So for example, the notice of your budget hearing every year says, published in a newspaper of general circulation. Um, some special assessment notices, if you're doing special assessments, the notice of that public hearing says it must be published in a newspaper. That's not the same as the official city newspaper, and actually the legal basis for being able to change the official city newspaper to a website that's not applying those statutes. And so then it creates a real headache with your court staff and your court city attorney. Figure out where things are supposed to go, and then worry about whether we put them in the right place. So, but I, I, I feel the need to tell you because a lot of cities are doing that, and you will probably hear about it at some point in time, someone saying, we've done this and it's so much easier. Um, there can be us. Uh, resolutions, so something less than a legislative act, when do we pass resolutions? When we're just doing policy-type things. Like you have an economic development policy that would've been passed by a resolution. Um, you got a spending policy that would've passed by a resolution, maybe adopted by motion. Um, or when the law says, something, and there are a lot of them, when you take this action, you shall do so by passing a resolution. And so we do it in a resolution. Resolutions are different from ordinances though, because they don't require a majority of the total city council, they require a majority of the city council present. So assuming you own an ordinance, if you only had four city council members there, no, that's a bad example. If you had three city council members there, two of them could pass a resolution. Obviously, if you have four, you'd still have to have three, so then, um... The mayor does not have a veto right of resolutions. Actually, if the mayor wants to, she'll vote on a resolution, if she wanted to, if she doesn't have to. Um, but you can just... And, and that's another thing I, I forgot to point out, is, is ordinances, the mayor has the ability, we frequently call it, to break a tie. Um, with the, with a five-member council, it's very unlikely you'd come to a situation where you would have a tie, frankly, you'd have to have an actual vacant seat to where you only have four elected council members. Then you could have two to two, and the mayor could vote to pass an ordinance, yeah, go ahead.
Diagonal.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, but with a full five-member council, it's very difficult to get to a situation where it's truly a tie, an ordinance for breaking our putts can.
Would it not count if, say, one person was absent, and then it came down to a two-two?
No, an absence, an absence for ordinance purposes.
Does not?
It, it, you still have to have a total of the total number of elected city council members, even if you wanted an absent party in. Resolution however, is a total of, is the majority of the quorum who has to be described. Um, and then motions are even...
I have a question about that.
Yeah.
So what if I am gone, and there's ordinance on the agenda to be passed? And so, would I... How, how would that, what would happen then?
We'd defer it.
You wouldn't be, you wouldn't be able to vote on it. There's no concept for proxying votes or anything like that. If you can't make it to the meeting, you can't vote on anything that's on the agenda.
Okay.
So if there is something of great importance to you, and you really can't make it to the meeting, uh, you know, I would talk with the mayor and the staff about, do we need to take this up at this meeting? Or is there, could we postpone it to a time when, when everyone can be present?
Okay, thank you.
Uh, motions then are the most informal, uh, those are ministerial administrative actions, approval, contract approvals, and those kinds of things where it's just on there and we just need to move, you know, I move, we approve, A, B, C, and that's, that's a motion. And those, the procedure for motions is pretty much the same as resolutions, except there's not a written resolution, so it's, it's passed by a majority of the quorum who's present. Questions?
Yes.
Okay.
So on the exact wording, um, we can just say, okay, I know there's been times in the past where you say we have to state exactly what the agenda says for the motion, but other times we haven't for that, so, um...
It depends on the particular item.
Okay.
Um, it, it, it depends on whether that specific action, I need you to say something about it.
Okay.
Versus just a general approval.
But generally, I could just say, like, if I make a motion to, uh, accept the agenda's, or approve...
Right, yeah.
The agenda's written, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and then I'm going to start speeding up.
Can I say something?
Yes, please.
Uh, yes, please. So, um, if you're not quite for sure how to word a motion, don't hesitate to make that motion. If you feel compelled to make a particular motion, there have been times I've looked at Andrew, and I've said, Andrew, I'm ready to make a motion, would you help me with what I need to say?
Okay.
Don't let that keep hold you back from making a motion if you feel compelled to do it. That's why he's here.
You can also, if it's not important, say, so moved.
Yeah, sometimes the mayor, you know, oftentimes if the mayor has laid out, I will entertain a motion for approval of this whatever contract, you can say, so moved. If it's laid out in the, in the procedure that way.
In a few payment, so...
Um, I wanna point out, don't wanna get into the weeds on it though, um, cities are creatures of statute. The city was created, it was created under statutes that were delegated from the state legislature. And for the first seventy-five years of the state's, uh, life, the city could only do what the statute said they could do. Um, and then, there was a constitutional amendment made many, many decades ago that gave the city what's called home rule. That basically says, yes, the city can do everything that this legislature has told it can do in statute, but if the legislature hasn't said anything about this topic, so think about it as filling in the holes. Anything that is in the city limits of Ketchikan, legislature has not said anything about, you have the home rule authority to act upon. Uh, and so, s- from time to time, I may bring you ordinances that may say they're home rule ordinances. Uh, the other thing it allows you to do is, even where we have a statute that specifically says, this is how a city does this thing, um, if that's not uniformly applicable to all cities in the state of Kansas, which there are a lot of of those, because as I told you before, the, the laws are set up where there's a set for, well, they're set for all cities, and then there's set for first-class cities, second-class cities, and third-class cities. Most of those in those second categories, we can do what's called charter out from under them using our home rule powers. So we can say, um, we don't wanna do it the way the legislature has told us, we're gonna charter out from under that and set our own rules on that topic. To do that, you pass a charter ordinance. It has to be published for, uh, twice, in the official city newspaper. It goes through a sixty-day protest period. Um, and if everything goes well, then, then that charter ordinance takes effect. If you do receive a protest, uh, it goes to election. Um, and that, it, and it would have to pass the election in order to, to take it back, is that...
One percent can protest it?
No, 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 it's, it's a, it's a, no, it's a, it's a certain percentage of the, um,
Okay.
Of the, of votes from the, yeah, of the electives of the city, yes. Um, okay, quick contract limitations, actually, before I get to that. I wanna talk about zoning cases for just a moment, if I can pass this out. Everybody's made that a bit. So you know, the city has a zoning code and subdivision regulations that are generally in the purview of the planning commission. But, most of those items would be a section of a few things like variances, well, actually, variances here do come to you.
Right.
With the exception of a few things that may go into the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Variance system.
Oh, variances, that, yeah, so it would be, yeah, okay. Up the... The way zoning matters work is the application is made to the city zoning administrator, and all of those items are worked out, and then if there is a quest for a zoning change, um, planned unit development, uh, special use, conditional use, variances, all those things. Okay, well, variance will be easy again. Uh, they go to the planning commission, the planning commission holds a public hearing, and then the planning commission looks at the application materials, what is being requested to be changed in the zoning, and then they look at these ten factors that I have pointed in this, you know, one-page memo to you, and they decide whether they think that they should approve, recommend approval or denial of the request of change to the city council. Then, after they've held a public hearing, the planning commission has made its recommendation to the city council. Uh, the, there's a fourteen-day protest period where twenty percent of the people who were in the notification area of that zoning change, I did mention that, but any time that there's a zoning request, uh, anyone within the city limits who is within two hundred feet of the property that's being affected will get a notice of the public hearing to be held with the planning commission. Um, if another, uh, twenty percent of the people within that area submit a protest petition, yes. Uh, within fourteen days of the public hearing at the planning commission, they can file protest petition. I'll tell you what that means in a second. But you get passed that fourteen days, and then it comes up on whatever their regular agenda is for the council after that period has run. Then, the council looks at the case as well. Dustin will come up, he will explain, uh, what the request is, all the information that he has worked with, uh, the applicant on. Um, he will go through what the city staff's recommendation is on these factors. Now, these factors are set out in your zoning regulations. They're derived from a Supreme Court case of the state of Kansas called the Golden State. Um, and the purview of the council then is to look at that, all that information, and decide for itself, under these factors, analyzing those factors and making findings of fact for that particular case under these factors, should it take the recommendation of the planning commission, whether that's approval or denial. Um, the, the council has three choices at that point once it's heard the case, heard the recommendation, the planning commission has three choices. It can take the recommendation of the planning commission, and it can do that by a majority of the council who's present, actually, take it back. Has to be, and approvals done by ordinance, so that would be, have to be a, a, a majority of the council in total. It can override the planning commission's decision. What's an override? Obviously, if the planning commission recommended approval, denial would be an override. But so would be adding or changing a condition that the planning commission has, uh, recommended. Sometimes the recommendations come with, we recommend approval, but with these three conditions. Sometimes it comes with approval, no conditions. If that comes to you and you say, well, we agree it should be approved, but we wanna add a condition, or we wanna change the way this condition is, or we don't think this condition needs to be, we can take it off. You do that, but that's an override, and that requires two-thirds of the council to do. And with you, that takes us from a three-council member to a four-council. The effect of a protest petition, if a valid one was filed within the fourteen days following the, uh, public hearing, is it would require a three-quarters... is it would require a three-quarters majority of the council to pass an approval of that request. In effect, that's the same number for a council of five people, that's four. So whether you are changing the recommendation or you're trying to overcome a protest petition, you'd have to do it by four votes. But most importantly is during those hearings, talk about these factors. Talk about the facts of the case that Dustin has given to you. That's why Ashley's really good about walking through and saying, do you agree with the staff's recommendation on this? Do you have thoughts on this topic? Because that's what you're sitting in what's called a quasi-judicial setting to make these determinations. And if a decision were appealed, which it can be appealed to the district court, what the court is going to look at is, did the council act reasonably? Did they look at and consider these factors in making a decision? And if you did, that's going to go a long way for upholding your decision. So that's, I know that was really quick, brief on zoning issues, but I wanted to make sure that we covered it. Running out of time, five minutes? Okay. Five minutes, quick. Other things to be aware of, contract limitations. The city is subject to what's called cash basis and budget laws. What that means is you cannot agree to pay any money outside of your budget year, which is the calendar year. So if someone were to bring a contract to you, the easiest ones to trip up on are like the photocopy release or, 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 or something. But if, if a contract goes beyond your current budget year, so basically December thirty-first of the current year, and says the city will pay money beyond that date for whatever reason, you can't agree to it. Now, there are lots of exceptions to that, not lots. There are exceptions to that, for example, when we issue bonds for the city, that's an exception because you're borrowing money for a long period of time. There are certain government loans that you're allowed to sign on to, like, you know, water loans and that kind of things that come from the state. Those are exceptions. But you couldn't borrow money from the local bank, for example, unless we did it through a bond issue. You couldn't sign a promissory note. You couldn't sign a lease of an office or some real estate where you paid the landlord rent beyond the, the first year. So when you, when you see contracts, like when I'm reviewing contracts that might come up on the agenda, I'm looking for those things as, as red flags. Things that get derived from that, indemnities, you can't sign anything that's an indemnity. So if sometimes, frequently comes, we'll get contracts that says the city will indemnify so-and-so for these situations and we have to say, you can't do it. You can't do it by law because that's essentially agreeing to pay something that might come up outside the red year. Construction contracts require payment of performance bonds. You probably don't need to worry about that too much. City administration will make sure that that happens. Spending authorities. The city has a spending policy and this is where I will leave it so that we can take a quick break and then start our next meeting. Has a spending policy where you have delegated certain limits of spending to the city staff. I encourage you to take a look at that, just so you're familiar with it. It sets certain dollar levels based on what the staff member is and what they can approve without coming to the, the city council for approval. Those things still have to be within your budget. It's not that they can exceed the budget by any means, that's a budget law issue. But if it's within their spending authority, they're allowed to go ahead and make those expenditures if it's within budget. Again, as long as they're not picking up any of those other contract terms that frequently get slipped in, indemnities and cash basis law violations. The city does have policies on the move required to take bids on anything, but the city's spending, the purchasing policy does have situations where you have directed the staff that we would like to see three bids on these type of things. So if that's the thing that they are going to bring to you, they, they will bring you three bids or they will tell you why they couldn't get three bids. They didn't get three responses or there's a sole source provider in this particular area. That does happen and this is the only person who's available to do this, that would be the exception. And then I will leave it with the Open Records Act. I'm not going to go through all of this. Just be aware that city documents are public records. There are of course exceptions, a long list of exceptions for things that the city can and must keep sealed. But you should always keep in your mind that first of all, if you cede it at a city council meeting, it's an open record. If it wasn't an agenda, it's an open record. Communications with each other might be open records. Your communication with city staff is certainly open records. Communication with me probably not because it would be city attorney, or city attorney-client privilege. But what I want to leave you with is the city has provided email addresses. Please use those for city business because what I don't want for you is your personal emails to have to get searched for things that could potentially be open records. And it's much cleaner if you can just say, no, city business, I always use my seat email address. So if there's a request for something and it needs to be looked through to pull out what's disclosable and what's not, you know, no one has to get into my personal email address, so. We ran out of time. I know there's probably a lot more that we could ask questions about, but obviously I'm always available. Anyone who can call me at, at any time or if you have questions, we can bring them to a meeting and we can talk about it.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
So council, I would entertain a motion to close the workshop. Adjourn, I'm sorry, adjourn. We'll use the proper term after council school. So moved. Motion by Karen, second by Todd, all in favor, say aye. Karen's by vote, we are adjourned from the workshop.